We good? Welcome to Santaquin City Council Meeting. It's July the sixteenth, seven o'clock. Glad to have everybody in attendance. It's amazing. We're getting more and more numbers all the time. Roll call, everyone is here. Just want to note that Lynn Meacham, Councilman Meacham, is on Zoom right now, live from the netherworld. Would like to ask if anyone would like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'll do that, Mayor.
Okay.
Maybe you already had.
You want me to do it?
Well, you had your hand raised. I don't know if you were just saying higher.
Love?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah. Would also like to ask if someone would offer an invocation or an inspirational thought?
I can offer invocation.
Okay.
Our Heavenly Father, we're thankful that we're able to gather together in the city council meeting. We're thankful that we're surrounded by such great people in our community and that we're blessed to be in such a beautiful area. We're thankful for all the resources that were given. Please bless us to make wise decisions. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you both. Next, I'd like to ask if anyone needs to declare of any potential conflict of interest for any of the items that are on the agenda for tonight? Lynn? I can't see you shake your head, so.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, just want to make sure it makes me feel better that you're answering. Move into the first part, which be the consent agenda. It will be the minutes of June twenty eighth, the special city council meeting, also the city council work session of July the second and the regular meeting of July the second as well. We'll start with the special city council meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or others that anyone needs to make? City council meeting, the work session on the second? Any corrections, additions? And the regular council meeting on the second? Lynn, I can't see you shake your head on any of these.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to bills. City expenditures from the twenty eighth of January to the twelfth of, twenty eighth of June to the twelfth of July, the amount of million six hundred nine thousand four eighty-seven. Any questions, any changes that need to go on to those bills to take care of that? It's a lot of money, isn't it, Art?
Just a lot of money.
Less than last year.
Okay.
My wife spends that on Amazon every month, so.
Yeah, doesn't it seem? The one item, also the out-of-state training request for Norm and Jason for their city administration training. You've had a chance to review that. Any questions? Are we good to move? Art?
I had a question about the dates. I got that resolved and I totally support them being able to go to this training.
All right. We're good. So I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded twice by Travis and Jeff, so we can pick whichever one at this point. Okay, Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's move on to the recognitions in public forum. You know what? This is really cool tonight to have Clint with us. And Jason, are you going to present this? Shad, both of you, who? Are you going to speak tonight, Shad, along with him? I would really like you on something here. You need to come and stand by him because you stand with him every day.
That's right.
We want you on video anyway. Jason?
Well, thanks for inviting us here tonight. And it's my honor to present Clint Hunter as employee of the month. I've got to know Clint a little bit the last three years. I've known him all my life. He was that little kid in, you know, that was bugging us older kids when we were growing up, but.
Jason, you were the little kid.
He is now.
But yeah, I've known Clint and his family for a long time. Great people, so. And I'm just going to go ahead and read this and go from there. Clint Hunter is a member of our city's Public Works Department, working in the Streets and Water Divisions, and has been with the department for the past three years. His prior employment was with Staker Parsons Building Materials, where he worked as a rock crusher for twelve years. Breaking rocks, big rocks into little rocks, right? Clint was born and raised in Santaquin and graduated from Paceon High School. He's been married to a sweetheart, Anita, for twenty-three years, and they have two sons, now eighteen and twenty-two years old. Clint enjoys outdoor recreational activities such as hunting and fishing. Some things I've noticed is Clint has consistently demonstrated exceptional dedication and a strong work ethic. He learns tasks quickly, ensuring high-quality work in everything he does. Though quiet and reserved initially, Clint's great sense of humor and amiable personality have earned him the respect and camaraderie of his coworkers. Currently working towards his water distribution certificate, Clint's commitment to professional growth is evident, and he never hesitates to take on new challenges. His willingness to learn and his positive attitude make him a valuable asset to our team. It's an honor to recognize Clint Hunter as our July twenty twenty-fourth employee of the month. Thank you, Clint, for your dedicated service and work for Santaquin City.
Thank you. Speech. Wait a minute, don't leave. Shad?
Clearly to say he is a very big asset to the city. And I'm glad he's on my team.
Thank you.
The mayor said you got to do it.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Great job.
You know what? Clint is a cool guy. I love that guy. When I was a kid, his dad played baseball in Salem. My goodness, that guy could hit a baseball a mile. He'd just stand up and he had arms about this big around and Clint takes after his dad, you know? Just a gentle giant, good people, so. Okay, public forum. We have a public forum we need to open up tonight. No, there's a building permit. Okay? Anybody that needs to speak? Or forever hold your peace? Okay. Building permits and business license report.
The moment you've all been waiting for. Much anticipation because we've not had this report for a little bit with some technical difficulties last meeting. So right now, we stand at one hundred and fifty-six total residential dwelling units for the current calendar year. It's broken down to one hundred and one single-family dwellings and fifty-five multifamily dwellings. There's also two additional commercial spaces that have happened this year. You can see that's compared to one hundred and nine this time last year, so we'll head up pace of where we were this time last year. For fiscal year, excuse me, for fiscal year, we are at two hundred and fifty-four as compared to one hundred and sixty this time last year, that being total. And then, as you can see, new business licenses, there's a lot that has happened since this report's happened. They're all home occupations except for one temporary business license, which being July is no surprise if a fireworks stand. So that's the report. Everything's here for you and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. New business. Okay, we have some discussion and possible action. The first one is number seven, the award of the abatement demolition of the old junior high school and seniors building. It's taken us a long time to get to this point. We had an award of three hundred and ninety? I don't know. We had a grant that covers all of these.
Three seventy-five.
Covers all of these costs and we are set to move forward. I just want to remind everybody and all those in the television audience that we will not be doing the demolition until after Orchard Days, just so they know. But the buildings to the west of this building, immediate west, over to the museum will be taken away. So we look forward to that and the future. So are there any things that you would like to bring up? Maybe let's talk about the award with the bids that were opened the other day, announce that price, answer any questions that we might have, and then we can vote on this.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. As I indicated, the A-one abatement, who did the original abatement report for the state and for us, they're the ones that were the little bidder on that for three hundred and ten thousand three fifty-five. That puts us at significantly below the four fifty that is our overall budget, four hundred and fifty thousand, but we still have some other work that we need to do in there for HVAC, plumbing, electrical, et cetera, to make sure that the, and bathroom, to make sure that the museum can stand on its own after those buildings are down. They do, as we indicated, they do have to protect in place this building that we're in here, as well as the museum, and make any minor repairs that may be needed just from pulling that building off from the other, from the side of the old school, the old museum there. Happy to answer any questions that you have about that, but we recommend that you allow the mayor to sign that we can award this to the A-one abatement.
Yeah, this isn't going to affect my decision on it, but I've noticed a lot of security cameras on that old building. Are they getting moved or just taken now?
We'll pull those off, yeah.
Just pull them off.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that was actually a security measure that we put in place while we were building this building because we bought all of the, if you remember, we bought all of the wafer and lumber and everything for this building.
So you're just keeping an eye on that?
And stored it out back because to save money on it.
Yeah, I was wondering what, I was just looking at the parking lots. I was wondering what they were for.
Yeah. They're not functioning anymore, but they did serve a purpose for a year and a half while we were building this building, so.
But we'll be able to recycle. I mean, we use them.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the contract. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Brian?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Okay, just checking. Thank you. Next one is the discussion and possible action on the update of the employee personal handbook regarding Juneteenth. This may take us just a few minutes. You've all had a chance to read some of the options that were brought up when we discussed that for some time, two weeks ago. I think there were some good positive notes. And to anybody that's hearing this right off the bat is, we're trying to make sure that we make a decision rather than next June, all of a sudden just say, hey, if you want to take it, take it off and count it. We want to make sure that it's in the handbook and we want a good reason behind it. And we've talked about the importance of freedom and how this relates to, actually, the date that the slaves in Texas were notified that the emancipation had been signed. And in reality, that affects us all. That freedom affects everybody. And we've discussed this. I know that we've probably got some questions and I would just open it up for a couple of minutes and see where you would like to lead, go, or propose that we might entertain tonight.
I support option C.
Boy, that was pretty straightforward.
I have some thoughts on this one. I've actually spent quite a bit of time thinking about this since our last discussion. Did some more studying on Juneteenth since our last discussion, and I realized that following the Civil War, slavery was ended, but it didn't end in Texas. So maybe Juneteenth should have been a Texas holiday, but it's not. It's a federal holiday. I do think that the ending of slavery is worth celebrating, and I also, on another thought, this would be an opportunity for us to enhance the benefits package for our employees with little cost to the city. And when we're in a time where we're trying to retain police officers, get firefighters, and keep our city employees happy, I think this would be something that we could do that would benefit our city employees, but wouldn't cost us a lot of money. And we could still observe this holiday even if we don't close the office. I would actually support option B.
Option B? Okay.
I, can I speak up?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Lynn.
Oh, who's this? No, just kidding. Go ahead, Lynn.
It's a voice from the past. I am adamant about this one in my thinking, as Travis has mentioned, I've thought about this a lot in the last two weeks, and I am for option A. I think we need to make this a holiday and close the offices and move that holiday to the closest Monday to the weekend. But I think we need to show our support for freedom and this signing of the Emancipation Proclamation and that we support it by giving our employees that day off. So I am for option A.
Okay, so we got A, B, and C covered for the night. Art, you and Jeff might be good to weigh in.
Well, because it's a federal holiday, I think eventually we should be moving to option A at some point. If we do option A, I agree with Lynn, it should be Monday or Friday, not on the actual day. I had someone mention to me that it should be the actual day, just like the fourth is and the twenty-fourth is, but as Travis said, this is really a Texas holiday. It was made a Texas state holiday in nineteen eighty, and a few other states here and there started recognizing it, but never actually making it a holiday, just kind of talking about it until, was it twenty twenty-one? When Biden made it officially a federal holiday?
Yeah.
There aren't celebrations in Utah for Juneteenth?
Oh, yeah, there are.
I haven't noticed any.
Up in Salt Lake.
In Salt Lake, okay.
Yeah, they've held a few.
It's not, it's not, I don't, maybe one day it will be like the fourth and the twenty-fourth where we take those days off because something's happening that day. It's been a tradition for over a hundred years for both of them, so I don't think it's as important to take it on the nineteenth, but Monday or Friday would be the best option for that. However, I don't know if we need to go there right now. I'm okay with either B or C, just kind of give them a day off for it, but it doesn't necessarily have to be during the month of June or anything like that.
A day off.
Well, with the floating holiday.
C is actually a float, use of a floating holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah, but B adds to a floating holiday.
Yeah, B will add one.
Right.
C changes it from one in the first six months, one in the second months, to two whenever you want, regardless of the month. I'm okay with, I'd be okay with any of the options, to be honest with you, but I don't know if we need to shut down the offices for it just yet.
This is a discussion, possible action, and absolutely all over the board. So we haven't covered A twice at this point.
Weighing our.
So what's Art say?
Yeah.
I've been all over this. And with the discussion and what I've heard, I think I go along with Travis and Brian and Jeff with option B. I like adding the extra personal holiday, but keeping the city offices open. I understand the handicapped staff, unless they choose to take it off. But part of this discussion, I want to include, the mayor and I had a conversation earlier today. I'd like to change the employee handbook where it doesn't require the employees to take their personal preference day any particular part of the year, not one in the first half, not one in the second half. Eliminate that half-year dividing line and let you take your personal holiday whenever you want to, all three of them, if we go with option B.
I agree.
That can be part of your motion.
I know it was brought up as.
If you get to the motion, I'll make it.
I know it was brought up as like a staffing issue, but I mean, anytime someone needs to take their personal day, they need manager approval. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct. So it's, I mean, it would just make it, put the burden on the manager to make sure their staffing, right? But I like options B and C. I prefer C because it stays in line with the days, the amount of days off that neighboring towns give, Spanish Fork and Paceon. It would keep us in line with that. But I like being, I like B and C because I think that it's important to give flexibility on personal days. So either way, even if we don't decide on something like this, I am a very big advocate of making the personal days, regardless of Juneteenth, allowable any time during the year.
If we give them option A and we make it a holiday, then everybody gets that option. They take that day off and it's paid. They get the closest Monday to the weekend of that week. I think we need to go with option A. As Jeff said, if we're going there eventually, I think we need to bite the bullet and do it now. We don't want to be the city in Utah that's not honoring that holiday. I think we need to do option A. I don't think there's another option for us, in my opinion.
To add some context, most private companies, and I know this as a government, offer Juneteenth on the actual day of Juneteenth. I don't know of many companies or even employers, whether they're nonprofit, that offer it on a different day. I think maybe governments do here, but.
The school district does, did it on Monday this year. If we're going to give it the actual day or give a day off for it, I'd prefer doing it on that Monday to give the three-day weekend. I had the nineteenth off and I wasn't really thinking about it, and I went, tried to go to the bank because I rarely get to the bank during the week, and then it was closed. I think it would be a benefit if they had Monday off and then they can do the things that they, that are going to be closed on the nineteenth.
Yeah. That's why a personal day is so great because it's flexible.
My wife works for the school, so she had Monday off and I had Thursday off.
Lovely. Perfect for planning your trip, huh?
Yeah. Or maybe it was Friday off. I don't know, she had one of the days.
I thought you were punished if you had to work for the school in June. That was summer school. I hated that.
She's in the accounting. They work all year.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Mayor. They don't get paid.
As I'm hearing this discussion, it's something that just came to mind. I talked to Norm and I hurried and looked it up. Let me read this to you so that you have a clear understanding of what your options entail. So, personal leave, in addition to accrued vacation leave, each full-time employee shall receive sixteen additional hours of leave, which shall be known as personal preference time. And then it goes through, part-time benefited, part-time non-benefited, and seasonal employees and volunteers are not eligible for personal leave. So I bring that up just because if you're looking to benefit the employees with an additional personal day, all the employees who are part-time benefited, part-time non-benefited, or seasonal, and any volunteers, they don't, they don't get that extra day to observe.
But they don't get the other ones either.
Right. If the, then they lose pay.
But if it's a paid holiday, then the city is closed to all employees and then there's maybe a.
And then they don't get paid for that day.
Yeah, part-time don't get paid on.
But they still can get hurt.
Correct. And so that's the thing is if you're wanting to help observe the holiday and allow employees to observe the holiday, you know, doing an extra personal day would not allow anybody who's part-time non-benefited to have a chance to observe that day without just, you know, not coming into work because they don't, they don't have vacation time either. So just, just something to clarify there because I know we're thinking of employees as a whole, but there's some context there of not every employee has the same leave benefits.
Do part-time employees have flexibility in how they allocate their hours during the week? Or is it very rigid for part-time employees?
It's according to how they schedule. Some have more flexibility than others.
So some could work a whole day the next day and take off the actual Juneteenth?
Their supervisor would just take a day off, but they don't get paid benefited days off. They don't get vacation time.
But they have the flexibility.
Sure. They can take off days after coordination with their supervisor.
The director is who they would work with, slay on that. Well, you know, we beat this up a little bit. Is this a point where you want to discuss it a little bit further in the future? Bring it on again? Or does somebody want to make a motion? I.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to make a motion that we approve option A. We make it an official holiday and we observe it on the closest Monday to the holiday during that week.
Okay, we've had a motion for option A.
Do you want to include the personal days being able to use all year?
Yeah, I'll include that, yes.
So this will be in addition to option A, just making it so the two personal days, the sixteen hours that Jason just mentioned, can be used throughout the year, not just half and half?
That's really two changes, but.
That's fine, we can do that.
And I think to be clear, because we don't have a notice or we don't have this on the agenda for changing the handbook, this is really you making a motion to give us direction so we can put together a draft and bring it back to you.
Yep. Okay. So we've had a motion to do so. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Okay. Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
No.
Brian?
No.
Three to one. Passes will, three to two, sorry. Yeah, Lynn is here and he did vote. So it's, this is instruction to go ahead, get it written up, and then we'll bring it again with it in the handbook as it's written to approve that.
And that part will be a ratification for the two things that have been talked about here tonight.
Yes.
If there's other handbook changes, they will be.
Do it at the same time.
Do it at the same time, but there would be a motion to ratify and then approve whatever else comes with it at the time.
This will include the elimination of the half-one year and half-dead year.
Yes, it will make it so that there's sixteen hours usable throughout the year, not just half and half.
Okay. We good?
We're good.
And you guys will take that and then in a future meeting, we can go over that one more time, make sure that we've got it the way that it's intended and we can go from there. Okay, that's the end of the meeting tonight. Oh, no, wait a minute. We do have one more thing. Sorry. I am terrible.
Came here for nothing, huh?
He almost got angry.
Hey, thank you guys for being here. It's always good to see you. Missing Lane, where's he?
He's probably golfing or something.
My phone did not ring.
Mayor, before we move on, can, when it's brought before us, can there be a dollar mail for that holiday with estimated overtime?
Yes.
Just an estimation for us.
That will be a matter of information again because the direction has already been given.
It's an estimate, just for informational.
Well, just a reminder, it's not going to be an exact amount because it all depends on who happens to need to work that day.
Right.
That's what.
Okay. I've enjoyed for nearly two years working with Lane and John and John and all the good things that we've been through. The CDA has worked diligently with the industrial park, Santaquin. The CDA has, uh, worked diligently with the, uh, industrial park, Santaquin Peaks. And, uh, we are ready to make a couple of changes tonight and, uh, you know, it's, it's fun to know where at, where we're at. And, uh, so I need a, I need a motion to convene to the Santaquin CDRA.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Lynn?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
So we're now in the CDRA. Happy to be here. Got rid of the council for a minute and now the board's here. We have an addendum that we need to make that goes in with, uh, it's addendum five to, uh, Santaquin two LLC real estate purchase agreement that we've been working with. This has to do with a change of the building and, uh, some of the discussion that goes along with that in preparation to be able to move forward. It's a good move. We, when we first had written the industrial park, uh, requirements and the standards that needed to be met, this was the first time we had ever done such thing. And we have amended these a few times as we've gone through this process. And, and it's because this whole idea of creating an, an industrial park was to invite businesses, to work with businesses, to find businesses that wanted to be a part of it, to bring jobs, to bring taxes, taxes to land that Santaquin owned, had zoned, and was just sitting there. And, uh, this represents a big step tonight and, uh, this will move us into where we will go next Monday, actually.
A week from Monday.
Yeah.
For closing.
Is it twenty second?
Twenty second.
Yeah. Anyway, I, uh, I would like to review it just a little bit. Has to do with, uh, putting, putting some, uh, overhead doors on the front of the building, which we didn't have at first and it seems to fit with the need and the, the, uh, the need of the company, the need of the developer. And, uh, a way in which we could maybe invite more businesses to come and still utilize some of the same space. I, I think it's a good move, but.
Yeah, so two, two things are being addressed here, Mayor. One is the, the sentence in the middle of this, the Roman numeral two, texture painted concrete walls is the, the concrete tilt-up building that they've already and always had in the agreement. And then the other one is the, is the style of the building, which is exhibit C, which I'll go to next. And, and just provides that clarification for the ability to be congruent with, with what we're talking about. Again, the back of the building is dressed up quite a bit because they now storefronts on the back of the building. The front of the building would have four, four bay doors. You know, we talked about it, loses a little bit of parking on the site plan, but, but is congruent with what they believe and what we believe is gonna be the best interest of the city to have smaller units and, and more, uh, more units to, to rent out for those purposes for, again, maybe it's a small business, it's a home business right now that needs to make the jump to some commercial space, so.
And it gives them some flexibility. There's a lot of, there's a lot of options in doing such a thing. I think it's a wise choice. And in fact, I've seen this kind of thing used in a few of the developments where I had worked in, uh, Draper and Sandy. Seemed to be quite a popular look too, so. Anything else, Norm?
Nope, that's it. Unless you have any questions, we do have the, the owners here. They're happy to, to comment or provide any information that you may have, that you may need.
Seeing none, then from the board, I would ask for a motion to accept that, uh, resolution oh seven oh three.
So moved.
It's been moved by Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Travis? Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
So paperwork's in order. I'll be able to sign that tonight. We should be able to move forward with it.
If you'd stay unsigned too, that would be helpful.
Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to, uh, leave the CDRA.
So moved.
Been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lynn?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Gosh, we're back to that council. So just to go through a few things, um, would like, um, the report, start with Jason. You wanna go?
So just a, a heads up of pending applications and, and items on upcoming, uh, DRC and planning commission agendas. For DRC development review committee, we have a traffic control request for a three-way stop at Red Barnview Drive and Foothill Village Boulevard, uh, which would be reviewed by the DRC. Uh, there's data being collected right now and we'll look at that from a technical standpoint and, and react to that.
What roads is that?
Uh, Red Barnview Drive and Foothill Village Boulevard. So it's that intersection which just immediately kind of north, uh, of that new, new park in Foothill Village.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's, I was like, I'm really hard of hearing today. Uh, i- it's a stop sign you're saying or what?
A request for a three-way stop to be there. Right now, there's just a stop sign of traffic, uh, on the third leg, not the Foothill Village Boulevard. Uh, we also have a site plan review for the quick quack car wash, car wash, um, which will be looked at by the DRC. For planning commission, we have a public hearing set for an amendment to a provision in our code that requires the planning commission to review, uh, additional sign requests. Best way to just describe that is like with Little Caesar's, with, uh, O'Reilly's Auto Parts, which is, is started construction. They wanted to have multiple signs on like three sides of their building. Uh, I think after, after two, they need to get special approval from the planning commission in order to get that extra signage. After we've looked at a couple of these, we, we felt that it's probably, uh, appropriate or, or i- i- it would make things a little bit quicker and, and can be handled, uh, administratively by staff. And planning commission's discussed it before and they'll, they'll look at that and then provide a recommendation to you. Uh, you ultimately will make the decision on if that amendment, uh, is, is passed. We have a, uh, an amendment to the plat for Wasatch Steel, which you, you looked at Wasatch Steel closer in the last meeting. And then we have, uh, a preliminary plan and an infill reduction request for the Bello Corner, uh, development. This is just up the street on two hundred south, uh, and Center Street. And that's what we have for planning commission. And just kind of a reminder for council, tomorrow we have a employee, uh, lunch event, if you will. It's not really a lunch. Usually for July, we do more of kind of just an ice cream, uh, social. That'll be over at the public safety building in the fire bay and we would invite council mayor, uh, to attend if, if you're available. I think that's it for me tonight unless you have questions for me.
Thanks, Jason.
So Mayor and Council, uh, just a, a quick update. You're aware of the, the fairly significant hiccup that we've had on Main Streets. They're, they've remedied that and are working to put things back together. They've got most of the road base that was in, inferior out and put the good stuff back in and are prepping for curb and gutter. Plan is to start curb and gutter tomorrow and they'll push it all the way through in the next couple of days. That will take some time to then backfill with additional road base and then get the asphalt down. The asphalt, it currently is pending to be done somewhere around the thirty-first of, of July, which will be just a few days before the parade and a few days before our, our two large rodeo events on, on Orchard Days.
Will that, uh, allow them to move the traffic by the third over to the south side?
It, it will allow them to move traffic to the south side. There, there will be, um, there, there will still be traffic control, but the traffic control will shift to the south side. And then the north side will become the construction area like we've seen on the south side. Now, we don't anticipate the north side taking nearly as long because there's no power to underground. The other utilities, the gas and everything else has already been put in. So it, it should be a significantly shorter period of time on the north side to, to get it ready for pavement. And then once that north side gets done and is paved, then there's a, a, an overlay, a two-inch cap, if you will, of asphalt that goes the entire width of the road that will be done at some point in the ti- in time here in the next sixty days or so.
I know I'm gonna be shot for asking this, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have possibly the old asphalt and the new asphalt on, on the first of August. Is it worth just saying, hey, that may take an extra day or so and all of a sudden we could think about just having the parade on Main Street? Or is, is the curb too ripped up to deal with?
I don't believe that's gonna be possible. There's, there's, they're still missing curb and gutter. They're still missing, park strip areas. There's sidewalk, there's no sidewalk on the north side. It's all gone for four blocks. So I, I, I don't believe that that's possible at this point in time from both a planning and a, and a strategic and a construction standpoint. I don't believe that's possible at this point.
Just think, you know, let everybody sit in the middle of the road, I guess.
So, so therefore that leads me to Orchard Days and the parade being on First South. Um, the, the Public Works crews have been helping out with weed control and, and mowing as the mayor has, has asked us to do. So they've been working on that to try and get things nice and freshened up for, for Orchard Days on One or South.
Everyone's been notified? I think, right, that was the.
That, that's my understanding. I, I did not personally do the notifications, but my understanding is everybody has received a, a knock on the door or a flyer or something indicating that that's what's happening. And so I, I believe that that's been done. Again, I didn't do it myself, but that was the plan.
Okay. Good.
Uh, happy to answer any other questions that you have, all, all kinds of other things still going on and subdivision side of things. And, uh, a- again, happy to answer any questions on projects or subdivisions or other things that we have going on.
All right, um, Lynn, do you have anything?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Travis?
Library, uh, board had a meeting last week. She talked about her summer reading program. So far, they've had a huge increase in summer reading. This year, they've got one thousand eight hundred ninety-three people signed up for summer reading.
My goodness.
She expects, well, in, in history, about half of those people finish, so she anticipates giving out about nine hundred prizes this summer, which is fantastic. That's amazing work.
I did that one time. What a hoop. That is so fun.
Yeah, they, their, their, uh, kickoff event was well attended, even with some bad weather. So there's a lot of great things going on there. Jennifer had some statistics for us because of the end of the fiscal year. They had, uh, twelve thousand seven hundred and fourteen people attend programs last year. They had eight hundred and fifty-two new cards, so that averages between fifty and sixty a month, and two hundred and ten of those are out of town. She had total checkouts from inside the library. So somebody walks in, they check out something, walk out with it, eighty-one thousand two hundred and thirteen. And that doesn't count delivery checkouts, which she estimates is about another eighty thousand.
That's what I do.
So, uh, I, and I thought, wow, I really contributed that because I checked out six books this month. I feel like I was heavily attending the library in my capacity and she had eighty-one thousand total. So in that confined space with her limited resources, our library is killing it over there. So I am excited to see what we can do and we get them into this new space and get all that ready to go, but.
Love to get that finished.
Lot of great things. Their Orchard Days, they're gonna do a book sale and a quilt silent auction. It's gonna take place over here in the, uh, multipurpose room. And, uh, based on the results that Nefi gets when they do their book sales, it's looking like this is gonna be pretty popular. So a lot of good things going on at the library. Uh, YCC had their elections this year. We got a new mayor, um, Sabrina. And, uh, she's already taken things in a new direction and she's gonna run the, uh, YCC kinda like a city council. They're gonna sit down with their budget. They're gonna plan out some events. They're gonna get to trainings. It's exciting to see the things that they're doing, so. We better watch out because they're coming for us.
Good.
Travis, could you invite the council to come to one of our meetings so we can meet them?
They were at our last meeting. Well, they were at a meeting in.
For some reason, you were on the road again.
Yeah, I was in North Carolina. Okay.
But, uh.
Invite me to one of their meetings then, would you?
You bet.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
Yep. Uh, let's see, um, another hometown market this Monday. It's Pioneer Day themed. Um, last week, or yeah, two weeks ago, it was really well attended. I think, um, most of us were there. Uh, the youth entrepreneurs are always fun. They always have a ton of booths there. Uh, I think the band this week is gonna be a, a local bluegrass band, so that'll be fun to have. Uh, let's see. We, it's our Public Works who takes care of the lawns and trees and bushes on Summer Ridge Parkway, right? Not the H-way. We, I've had a few people mention to me and I drove up and I noticed we've got a bunch of dead trees sitting on that parkway. If we just get those cleaned up. Uh, also I've, I noticed on the north end, the little bushes we have close to the trees, I don't, they look like they're part of the tree right now. They're getting onto the, the road off the curb and if we can get those trimmed up, that'd be great. And if we could replace some of the dead trees, that would be nice too. I don't know if we have that in the budget, if that's gonna be possible, but when I moved in sixteen years ago, we had a lot of trees on the parkway and now I think we're down to about thirty percent of the ones that were there originally because they just keep dying. It'd be nice to have some shade and green along that parkway again. Uh, but, you know, if you just have to take out the dead ones, that's fine too.
We'll get.
Whatever we have a budget for. And, um, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Art.
Every year when we have, uh, our city celebration on the beginning Saturday, there's a flag raising ceremony that occurs. Uh, historically, it's been at, uh, rodeo grounds at seven AM. I've noticed in the booklet that's been printed that it's going to be here at City Hall and it's gonna be eight AM. Just wanna make sure everybody's aware of the change.
And Art's gonna be over there.
I'm gonna be conducting because the mayor's asked me to.
You're the mayor pro town.
So that's the twenty-sixth then at eight AM?
Excuse me?
Twenty-sixth at eight AM.
Twenty-seventh is what the.
Sorry, twenty-seventh.
Saturday.
Saturday.
Sorry. Takes me a minute.
We're, um, Kathleen Cook, who's a pioneer of Santaquin, is being honored and it's most appropriate.
Okay, uh, Br- uh, Brian?
Um, I just wanted to recognize our, um, Public Works, uh, department. Uh, I've reached out multiple times about different things in parks and, um, Jason and his team are amazing at responding really fast and fixing things. Um, it's an extremely hard task to maintain everything in the city. Um, and I'm so impressed, uh, and I've been able to share that with residents um, who have also been really impressed at just, um, the kindness and that they have towards, yeah, we can work on that and being so attentive. Um, and so I really appreciate that. Uh, I also wanted to highlight tomorrow morning, in case anyone's watching, I don't know if anyone's watching, uh, but, uh, at eight AM here in Santaquin City Hall and downstairs is a chamber of commerce meeting to go over finances, um, financing your business. And that's a monthly thing every third Wednesday. Um, so if anyone approaches anyone else on the council and is talking about their small business growing in Santaquin, refer them to that because it's a great resource. That's it for me though.
Okay.
I do have one thing.
Yeah?
During the business meeting, I don't know if this takes, uh, wh- what kind of approval it takes for a, a director like Jason Callaway to make a schedule change. But I was thinking as we were going through these hundred plus days this last few weeks, uh, this is something do, they do in Arizona. Maybe our public work staff could start earlier, like six AM and work till two and try to get done before the most intense heat part of the day. Just, just something, I don't know where, I don't know how high that has to get approved by, but just something to consider for the benefit of our public works people to get them out of the heat as soon as we possibly could if, if it's so extreme.
I think it's a good idea, but leave it up to the director.
Right.
Cause they can do that without us.
Okay. I suggested that to Jason during the break when we were honoring him.
You guys are cruel.
Um, one thing I just thought of, we all have these sitting in front of us today. As of last year, we're not mailing them out, right?
That's correct.
So go online, QR code, download the, the booklet yourself. We still have some at the, here, the library and a few other places. But yeah, just make sure you get it. There's a lot of, a lot of information for Orchard Days. We do, we do a lot. We do, we do a lot that week.
Is that on the city's website?
Yep, there's just a QR code on the Orchard Days page.
Okay. Lastly, um, I wanna bring up a thought. Um, in the next few weeks, we're gonna tear out these buildings to the west. And one of the complaints that we get about the building around here, things that are going on, the, what's, what's happening? I've been thinking a lot about putting parking down first, first south in the middle of the roadway, which would mean we would maybe have to lay a little more, uh, gravel at least on the north side of the road. But, uh, in the middle of the road, just paint parking strips the length of the block in the middle on diagonal, forty-five degree, so that people could just come in, pull in, and park all the way down the road. That'll give us another seventy parking spaces for senior citizens, for people that come here, that go to the library, that will even access our park in the coming days. And we can do it for very little money, I think. I'd, I'd like to consider it, anyway. Maybe even bring it up in the next council meeting. Maybe, uh, I can make a drawing or something, lay it out, and, uh, we'll see if we could do that. Is that all right?
Yeah. So are you, are you saying just the, this block, or how many blocks are you saying?
Just this block.
Oh, okay, okay. Wow, seventy cars can fit in just this block? That's impressive.
We could do it, we, we measured it, and if we actually got creative, we could do ninety-degree parking and put in another hundred and thirty pretty easily.
Would that leave enough room to, for traffic going both ways, or we just have one?
Both ways.
Okay.
Or we could even shut off part of the block and just make half of the block parking only out there. But that would be a real problem for the parade going through next, next month.
I think angle parking would be better than the ninety-degree.
And a- angle fits in with what they do on Center Street in Provo.
Right.
And, and, you know, it could, it could really work and help us right now with the need for parking.
Yeah.
So, just so the council is aware, that road, uh, one or south from fourth east to third west is our widest road. We have a hundred and thirty-two feet of right-of-way there. Main Street, just as a comparison, is only ninety-nine.
Yeah.
So it, we have significant amount of right-of-way. We don't have all the asphalt that we would need for that, but we have a significant amount of right-of-way where this could be very feasible.
Wouldn't that be nice if we could, uh, talk a company that might owe us a favor to put a strip of asphalt down the north side of that and...
I'm, I'm sure they would be able to take our money for us asking them to do that.
I know. Just thinking.
Leftover asphalt.
Leftover from the, yeah.
Anyway, I think it's a solution we could throw out, we could, we could lace more road base down and just deal with it.
We do still have some houses here, though.
I know, that wouldn't do anything for the houses at all.
All right.
Give them more parking for their in-laws that come.
Okay, just wanna make sure they...
Yeah. So, just, just a thought, think about it, maybe we'll put it on the agenda and talk about it in the future, okay? Uh, Canyon, I went up Canyon the other day, I took Jeff up with me, and he got to see it all the way up to the fourth bridge. And they were putting in, uh, box culverts that day. We were there when one and two went in, and, uh, there's seven of them, I think he said.
That's what he said, yeah.
Uh, quite a, quite an operation. We, we've watched these in the past, uh, they pull up with a diesel and a box culvert on the back, two of them, actually. And a crane lifts the box culvert over and puts it into place, and then it gets the second one and puts it into place, and they chain, uh, bind them into position. And they're bolted and held together. And then they lift up the trailer off of the diesel truck and lift it out of the way and let the diesel back down the road, turn around, and they flip the trailer around in the air, hook it back up, and the driver drives off. It is the neatest thing on that little road. It, I'd never imagined that you could just whip a forty-foot tractor trailer around on a, on a fifteen-foot road like that. You know, pretty amazing. But, um, Jeff was able to see it.
It's looking good.
We, we've still got, uh, a lot of things that they'll be doing in the future, but a lot of walls were in, they're preparing for a couple other walls, some fixes, and they'll be doing asphalt shortly up there. Looks good, looks really good. I talked to the guys this morning, and they just love their job. And I can't imagine, geez, working up that canyon, this...
Best place to do construction in this heat, I'll tell ya.
Yeah, probably, yeah. They, they're good, they're really good. Uh, I met with, um, the state, uh, DNR guy, Mark Farmer, over properties. We talked about the trails, we even made a couple of changes from trails that I had laid out over the winter, last winter. Um, in the meantime, I've been talking with, um, uh, Joel Kester, and we've made some changes up in there so that we got off of the forest ground in, uh, north end. And so all of that's gonna be ready to go as soon as I decide I have more time to dig more trails. However, we dug a couple of new trails on, on our property, things are going really cool. And, uh, if you haven't driven up and seen the Skills Park that A R C, the American Ramp Company, are putting in with the grant money that we received, uh, we have got one cool park coming together. And there are going to be some young men and women, and I'd say young, younger than at least my age, so anybody under sixty-nine at this point would, are gonna have a ball. It, I, I look at that and go, I, I would love to do it on a motorcycle, but, you know, bicycle, I don't know. I know. But, uh, this, this is a great addition. It hasn't cost the city really anything. Uh, the property, for the most part, that we're on in that area is all owned by the city and has been for nearly a hundred years, and we're finally doing something with it that allows people... If, if you would go up there almost any time of day, it's just packed. And, uh, they're not only just Santaquin people, they're coming from all over, and, uh, I love it. So, um, it's, it's been a lot of fun to work on that. I've just got great people that are doing it, and I wanna thank the support of this council, the staff, and all the guys. This, this is a great thing. And it was, uh, a vision, and I think the vision's pay- paying off. Similar to the vision of the industrial park, that's paying off, and that's paying off big time, so. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eyes above the nose, thanks. I'm, I'm sure you're so far away, Lynn, that it just took a second longer to get fixed.